Planning Commission, we're all present except for Bob. Unless we have another guy?
Nope, Bob, we knew he was going to be out this evening and we are still down one Planning Commissioner, Planning Commissioner member, but we do have at least one potential applicant, so hopefully that won't be for long.
Any additions or deletions for the agenda today?
None from staff.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve agenda, all in favor, same sign. Aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, pass with all present. Few minutes from September 12th, 2023.
I just have a comment on the minutes. I remember during the extensive hearing we had, which was really a good discussion we had going. Neil mentioned at the end of the hearing that if he had the berm and it would had vegetation and stuff, he would not be against the solar garden in there, and I don't read that in here like that. Now, I wish Bob were here and he could help confirm that, but he was sitting over here on that side and he made that mention. Things, times were changing and he thought with a larger berm and vegetation that it would be more acceptable to him. And I don't see that written in here at all, so I'll just bring that to your attention. Does anybody else hear that?
I don't think he was at the podium where it got recorded. I think he was sitting in the audience and he verbally said it.
He was sitting over here, yeah, when he made that statement after Bob Crisco.
Yeah, that would explain it. That's why when, when our staff was doing the minutes, if it, if it wasn't on the, if we had people that weren't at the podium, it, it wasn't caught, so that's why it wasn't reflected.
Well, I just think it's important to add that to the...
Yeah, but, but if, but, but I think if, if there's concurrence amongst the planning commissioners that, that that did take place and everybody's acknowledges that, I think we can, we can adjust those minutes to reflect that.
Not only that, I want to compliment you on the most detailed minutes I think I've read here.
Don't compliment me, compliment Monica in her office.
That's really good.
I appreciate her hard work, it was a long time for her to, to put these together.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Motion, can I get a second?
I'll second, and I, and it's a very minor one, but on page 13, Mr. Crisco's name got truncated on the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 paragraph. It just says Mr. Tri, T-R-I, so fairly obvious that it was him.
Yeah, we can, we can adjust that before they're finalized.
A motion and a second to approve minutes from September 12th, all in favor, same as saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, pass with all present. Way Park Plant Commission hold a public hearing at City Hall, 19 13th Avenue North at 6:30 or soon after on Tuesday, October 10th, 2023 to hear the following request. Request of the Church of St. Joseph's and Robert Valentine Church for conditional use permit to allow for a school in a R1 single-family residential district. Property is located legally described as Lot 7, Block 24, Townsite of Way Park, all in the city of Way Park, Stearns County, Minnesota. Property address is 108 6th Avenue North, Way Park, Minnesota, 56387. Public hearing open at 6:34.
Planning Commission members, folks in the audience, anyone watching at home, this request has been submitted by St. Robert Bellamy Church with approval from the current property owner, the Church of St. Joseph regarding the former St. Joseph School property at 108 6th Avenue North. The applicants, from my understanding, have a purchase agreement in place regarding the property pending successful review and ultimate approval of this request to reopen the facility as a school. The, the general location map is, is up on screen, but I think most are probably familiar with the, the location in general. The applicants are proposing to reopen the former St. Joseph School property as a private faith-based school, which would relocate from their current location in the greater St. Cloud area as their enrollment has begun to exceed the capacity of their existing space. The property, this property at hand was established as a school prior to the existing zoning ordinance. It's a few decades old in which schools are considered conditional use now in the underlying R1 single-family district. This is kind of a nuance with this particular property because its previous school use was discontinued for a period of greater than a year, so then it's required to obtain a conditional use permit in order to restart operations as a, as a school again. If, if say the previous school had ceased operations and someone slid in in six months or eight months or just under a year, they would not have to have pursued a conditional use permit to, to restart that school activity, provided it was in the same general vein. The property has most recently been utilized for some limited daycare use, although that used ceased operations at an unknown time in the last several years. There has still been some periodic use of the building through the current owner, such as quilting activities that were taking place, a quilting club that was in place when we did a walk-through of the property with the, with the applicants a few weeks back. The proposal outlines use of the, of the school for K through 12 private faith-based operations with a current enrollment of approximately 110 students with hopes to expand that as time, as time wears on. Approximately a dozen staff members for the facility are, are proposed. The intent of the school will be to begin operations with six to 10 small classrooms, several offices, use of the existing indoor gym and, and the use of outdoor play area across the street, across First, First Street North, which is not part of the property, but they, they would have a agreement to potentially use that. There's no exterior modifications or expansions proposed at this time, although that, that could potentially happen in, in the future, but that would be subject to separate review and approval processes if that were the case. Due to the age and condition of the building, the applicants have been coordinating with contractors, at least one contractor, as well as city inspections regarding code compliance aspects. The applicants are approaching the property with the intent to, to maximize improvements based on available funding by focusing on any immediate needs and then in time and as additional funding becomes available, move to further use and updates, really trying to essentially kind of get the most bang for the buck for, for their proposals, kind of dealing with the most immediate needs first and then adding more later as, as opportunities may present themselves. Again, no expansions proposed at this time, although they, the applicants in conversation have expressed an interest in potentially working in the parking lot area to lessen water infiltration around the building, coming from the parking lot, and potentially indicated interest in reconfiguring the existing alleyway to exit around the school rather than through the parking lot area. That would be a separate action request, there'd have to be an associated public hearing with that, but it, it's something that could be considered for the property. As, as a reference point, a similar configuration was approved for the ultimate sports bar with regards to their alley access in the past several years where instead of going straight through the parking lot and exiting out, it, it was reconfigured to be an L and kind of guide traffic out that way to minimize traffic through the, through the parking lot area. Not, not being considered at this time, but something that may be in a potential long-range interest for them if this goes forward. Going back to the general location map here, as you can see, the existing parking lot area is gravel, this is an older property, and while it is required for parking surfaces to be hard surface for such areas per city ordinance, I think that given the intent of the applicants to reoccupy a largely vacant structure and focus on operational aspects, I would be okay with setting some allowance to, to maintain that parking lot as gravel areas for the, for a period of say five years, allowing as current condition, then review it and reassess at that time for, for their action if, if they don't opt to do it in that time. There's no food service on site and the condition is recommended that the applicants coordinate with Stearns County regarding any food and beverage licensing aspects. There's no commercial kitchen in the property. They, from what I understand, I believe students bring their own lunches or there may be some limited kind of prepackaged snacks or, or beverages, but that's not unusual for kind of operations of this nature. Kind of going through the exhibits here on screen, this is just kind of the general layout of the property. It's kind of a, a split level primary basement area with basement mechanical, primary first floor with classroom, going up to a kind of a split area with a gymnasium and then a second story with additional classroom space and, and workspaces. And just going through some, these are pictures from the, from the beacon, the county's assessors and county information regarding the property, just for folks that may not be familiar with it for some reason or another, to give an idea of the, kind of the general conditions. You can see the educator sign that is still in place, I believe, from its previous use for the daycare, early childhood education aspects. My recommendation for the request would be for approval of the conditional use permit with the following conditions. I have eight proposed conditions that are certainly up for, for review or, or consideration with the, the planning commission as well, so I'll run through these first and then we can perhaps discuss. Again, recommending approval of the conditional use permit with the following conditions. Number one, utilization of building or portions thereof shall be subject to review and approval as per city of Way Park building official. All exterior and interior work shall be subject to necessary, uh, building, plumbing, electrical and other permits as deemed required by city staff. Number two, all necessary construction activities shall be completed to satisfaction of city of Way Park building official prior to commencement of any activities in impacted areas. Number three, applicants shall demonstrate compliance with any requirements set forth by Stearns County with regards to food, beverage, storage and service. Number four, any new exterior signage requires separate permit review and approval prior to fabrication or installation of signage. Number five, exterior lighting modifications or installations shall require review and approval by planning and community development director prior to installation. Lighting shall not be directed toward adjacent properties and shall comply with, with city ordinance 52.49, .09 lighting standards. Number six, any parking areas upon the site shall either be hard surface with concrete or asphalt within five years or seeded sodded to as not, so as to not be further utilized for parking. The issue of hard surface parking may be further reviewed and/or modified upon review and approval by city staff and/or city council after December 1st, 2028. Number seven, any on-street parking shall comply with applicable street parking postings and city ordinance 61. Lastly, number eight, utilization of the property for emergency homeless shelter, transition housing or other similar use shall be prohibited except for state licensed facilities as currently allowed for in the R1 single-family zoning district as per city ordinance section 52.12. Again, I would recommend approval of the conditional use permit with those conditions. With that being said, that would conclude my, my report and we can open it up for, for discussion or, or comment.
Thank you, John. Commissioners have any questions or?
I'll be kind of tight. Well, I took time to go over to the building and walk through it with one of the representatives in the building staff. I'm always concerned about handicap code, handicap accessibility. There's no area on that, in that building that would allow handicap sanitation facilities for someone in a wheelchair. Anyone on a, using Kenny sticks or any other kind of sticks are going to have problems using the restrooms. The stalls are very, very small, very close together. The only turnaround area is, is by the sink area. I'm concerned about having three different floors that could be accommodating classrooms. There is no way for anyone who may be disabled to go from the first level to the second level if they have instruction up there or to the third level, depending on how you're looking into the building. So I have some concern about that and, and if I understand that our building official is going to be taking care of those concerns, I don't have a lot of concern with that, but we've got broken windows and screens and it just, the building's a mess, it needs an awful lot of work and I commend people for wanting to take that on, but it just, it just really is out of compliance with a lot of the codes that, that I'm familiar with.
Yeah, and, and that's to be expected for a building of, of that age, you know, certainly the building, I believe, dates to the, at least the 50s from what I understand.
Well, it also has asbestos flooring in it, which is, which is a concern.
Yeah, and, and I believe the, I know representatives from the property or from the project are here tonight and they can, they can speak to that, but in, in our discussions with them, they, they're cognizant that, you know, it's, it's some things that need some attention, that's where, where I reference that they're, they're kind of triaging things almost, you know, tackling what, what needs to be done kind of first and foremost with their, with their, with their funding they have available right now and then trying to, you know, revisit accessibility and some of those things as those, as they, as those things will be triggered by different building permit activities. They kind of want to focus on just getting up and going for right now. They're not, from my understanding, and I don't want to speak for them on this, they're not against any sort of, you know, code compliance aspects or, you know, tackling those when, when it's appropriate, but they, they want to be sure that they have the, the sequence and, and operations laid out correctly, kind of a, a plan of attack almost to, to do it right and so they're not, not having to revisit projects that, that they've already undertaken. And to their credit, they have worked with a architect and engineer already in, in reviewing some of that, so they're not, they're not going into this, you know, not, not knowing that, that they're in for some significant work.
It's going to be a big project, but I commend them for taking it on, we sure do want to see that, that building utilized again.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a challenging property.
Concerned about, you know, disabled kids who need to use restroom facilities.
Yeah, understandable and...
That's a concern for me as well.
More than fair. Yeah, it, it's a, this is always going to be a challenging property to work with in, in its configuration, but, you know, seeing as it, as it was set up as a school, granted it was a school, you know, set up as a school decades ago, but to, to bring it back to life, to me, having it be a school again is probably the, the path of least resistance, I guess, to say, to, to put it to use again and, and not have it sit dormant for, for a number of years. It's, it's not, it's honestly not very well-suited for, for many other uses that, that may want to use it and any other uses that, any other users we would have would, would ultimately run into the same sort of issues, so I give them credit for wanting to, you know, take it on.
Hey, this is a public hearing. I just had one question, John. I noticed from the county photos that there's two standalone sheds. Are there any issues or restrictions associated with those? If you look at that photo, those, the bottom two photos on that page?
Uh, these, these may be dated, so I can't say that the existing conditions are, are the exact same at the moment. I'm not aware of any, any issues with the sheds. I would, just given the, looking at this one, at least on the right, appears to be much newer. I think they're just general purpose storage sheds, probably for, you know, lawn equipment, general maintenance equipment, that sort of stuff. I'm, I'm not aware, I, I can't say it's come up as a point of concern at all, but I, perhaps the, the applicants can, can speak to those a little more.
Hey, this is a public hearing, does someone want to come up and state your name and address and?
Hi, I'm John DeVorek, I'm with the St. Robert Bellamy Academy Planning Committee. So, a couple things, you had said regarding code, we are fully expect to be compliant with all code requirements, there'd be no question about that. Regarding the buildings, the, we do not anticipate right away doing any repairs or major changes to those buildings other than what's necessary for their function, including the school, which would be broken windows. We plan to have anything like that repaired before school starts. Do you have any other questions?
I'm still concerned about the ability to use the restrooms, are you going to be taking care of that right away?
That will be taken care of, that is actually in the plans, we've been working with Bozer Construction or BCI to figure out how to make that happen. And John, we'll, whatever code that we have to follow, we will, we'll certainly apply it. I mean, you're asking specifically if we have ADA plans before we move in or, well, at the time of move-in? Are there any required at this time?
That's not my area to, to, to speak to, that would be under the umbrella of the city building official.
If it satisfies this committee that we would have ADA modifications, we'll certainly do that.
Well, the issue is going to be if you have someone in a wheelchair who has to use a restroom facility, where are they going to use a restroom facility? They can't get into those narrow stalls, those stalls are too narrow, they can't be utilized. The, the side rooms you have off to the, off the hallway are also too narrow, they don't have enough turning space for a wheelchair. There's no chance though, you, you're going to meet the accessibility codes on the first day that you open, it's just not going to happen. You aren't going to do it. It's physically, you've got all of these stalls, you've got these low sinks, there's no chance you're going to be able to use those with someone in a wheelchair. And that's, that's the concern I have, and yes, it's an ADA issue. And I do some surveying for ADA at this point in time and I, and I don't see that, but I can't see dragging kids in and saying, here, come onto school, and by the way, you're going to have to use a coffee can to go to the bathroom. Seriously, how are you going to do that? Those stalls are about this wide, they're for little kids.
I, I don't have an answer for you right now, I can certainly prepare an answer for you.
I talked to one of the guys over there this afternoon, this evening.
Yeah, and I was touring as well, I think I saw you, right?
Nice guy.
So certainly, we will take that into consideration and we'll do our best to meet the ADA requirements, there's no question about that. My, I have a question though, in regards to that, was the previous occupant required to have ADA changes? Cause they should have happened years ago, if that's the case.
Years ago, I wasn't involved at all years ago.
Okay.
I assume it was grandfathered in, they didn't ever remodel the building.
Yeah, and if we remodel the building, we know we will have to do the ADA upgrades, we understand that.
But it's sat empty, now you're going for a variance to reuse it, so then it should be compliant.
If that's the wish of the, of the committee, we can certainly get that into our plans and make that happen.
Thank you, anybody else like to speak for or against or comments? State your name and...
I'm Brian Hagan, I'm a trustee with St. Joseph's Church, so connected to the school building. The window has come up a few times and we do have eastside glass fixing that window within the next couple of weeks, so the, the window will be taken care of. And you're right, that we were grandfathered in, so the ADA, it's certainly something that, you know, we want them to have accessibility, it was grandfathered in. A previous group that was looking at that, when they were looking at handicap accessibility, there is a staff restroom on the first floor, that, that was the most likely restroom to be easily converted into something that a child could use if they had a wheelchair. So, just wanted to add those comments related to those two issues.
Anybody else like to make a comment for or against or?
Hi. My name's Mike Pond, I live at 129 6th Avenue North.
Across the...
Cross, pardon me.
Across the street.
I, it, it hasn't been mentioned by anybody here, when they plan on opening this, what, what's the timeframe on getting everything all done? And it, it kind of seems as though you're doing some of these things on the fly, especially in regards to the ADA, I'm also very much cognizant of, of the ADA. Nothing's been said in years past, if you guys been in Way Park as long as I have and there's probably some people, as a matter of fact, I know there's somebody here who's been here longer than I have, pardon me. St. Joseph's School was never K through 12, it was K through 6, wasn't it, Herb? Yeah.
Eight?
Anyway, 110, that sounds real heavy for, I mean, I've lived across the street for 31, 2 years and I don't remember ever seeing that many kids around there. And I'm also concerned about how the kids get there, is it buses, is it, you know, just people driving up, hours of operation? Oh gosh, what else? A school resource officer, are they going to be coming to the city of Way Park saying, hey, we need a, you know, we need a cop at the school? Unfortunately, these, you know, those are questions that have to get asked nowadays. It, it seems as though there's a lot of answers or a lot of questions that just, you know, they haven't been addressed. Now, I know that the planning director has gone through and some of you have gone through, so you might have gotten the answers or you, you know, you know, you raised the questions or you've made notes. Nobody back here has and you haven't brought it to our attention. We're, we're going blind, or I am, and I'd like a few more answers before you make, before I make any kind of decision, you know, to do it, before I get those would, would be irresponsible. Appreciate the time.
Anybody else would like to come up and speak?
Brian Hagan, again, trustee, St. Joseph's, so it was a while ago, but in the 60s, there was close to 500 kids utilizing that building. Over time, it did go down, but there certainly was, many years there were there, were more than 110 students using the building. And we have been very concerned about selling this building to a good neighbor for both our parish and for the community, and we feel like this is going to be a very good neighbor. An education, K through 12, faith-based group, so this is a fit that our parish feels really good about and hopefully the community surrounding it will too.
Mr. DeVorek, did you want to speak on, on the aspect of any busing or drop-off plans? I know, I know we've talked about it.
Yeah, absolutely.
I should have elaborated in the report, but I missed it inadvertently.
Yeah, so there is no busing, there'd be parents dropping off their kids and picking them up, some parents carpool, so, and then the other question was hours of operation, I believe I listed in the COP, 7:30 to 4:30 would be the typical hours of operation Monday through Friday. As far as what Brian was saying, we do intend to be those kind of neighbors you'd want and I think we can fulfill that, I think you'll actually enjoy, the neighborhood will enjoy having these children attending school there and being part of the community. Did I miss a question at all?
I was wondering one more thing. If, if I write it right on your, on your website?
Mr. Pond, could you come, make sure you come to the mic so we can get the conversation on record, please?
Okay, Mike Pond, 129 6th Avenue North. If memory serves, now I, I may have been reading this wrong, St. Robert Bellamy, did they not have a, or... may have been reading this wrong, Saint Robert Bellamy, did they not have a, or run the church that was just down the street from the, the current, you know, the Saint Joseph's Church? Down on the corner, I believe it used to be a Methodist church, if memory serves.
The, the white, the white-
That's correct.
-mormon church on the corner. There's no connection there.
Okay. Gosh, what else have I got here? Oh, that's it. Okay, my mistake.
The, the one question I believe you had, and Mr. DeVorek, if you'd come back to the, to the mic to answer, was your anticipated opening or schedule of events leading up to opening, kind of what your timetable looks like?
Yeah, that's right. We do anticipate fall of twenty twenty-four, if we are able to meet all code requirements that are expected of us. And if we have to push that back, we certainly can.
Thank you.
And then regarding the church at the end of the block, there was a time when Saint Robert's Bellamy was there for a short period of time, and then they moved to their current spot, Saint Cloud.
Mike Pond again. I, I had just remembered, I, I had also read that they have quite a few acres that, that they own. I'm not sure where, Stearns County. But that they're planning on improving or, or doing something with, at least that's what their website had said. I'm also still concerned about i- in regards to, now, there's a, a small playground on the other side of, as a matter of fact, it's fenced in. Is that part of the property as well? And now the, and the, that back parking lot, that, that extends all the way to Fifth Avenue North. Is that correct?
The park, the area in red that you can see outlined, that's the property at hand. The, the playground is under separate ownership. I, I think I mentioned that briefly in my-
Right, but you're talking about the one that's across the street.
The one across First Street North, First, First Street North.
Right.
The playground, the playground that you see, or that little area there-
But there's a small fenced in, at least I believe it's still fenced.
It was part of the EduCare playground for little kids.
Right. But, but that's part of the-
That's, yep, that's part of the property.
That is part of the-
Whether they, whether they use it or not, or reconfigure it, that's up, up to them.
Still, nothing was addressed in regards to school resource officer, and-
The City of Wait Park has pulled its school resource officers due to issues with the state. If there was an issue at the school that they, that they contacted the police, police would respond.
Right.
It's, it's not a public school, so it's doubtful that a, a school resource officer would be posted in a, in a private school.
Okay, thank you.
Happy to address school resource officer. Saint Robert's Bell, Bellamy Academy has never had one. We have active parents that help with recess and making sure student safety is obtained throughout the day. And we do not anticipate having the need for a resource officer.
Anybody else like to come up and make comment or stating?
Yes, my name's Herb Blummer. I live directly across the street from their north door where they're going in. I came in here-
Could you speak in your microphone, please?
Could you speak in the mic, please?
I said, when I came in here, I had a ton of questions lined up. If I didn't like something, but I don't have any questions. I liked everything that I heard from these people. I think they're gonna be good neighbors. You know, there's nothing in there right now, so the building is just gonna go downhill. Who knows what else is gonna happen to it? This is a good proposal, I think. And I'm probably the only alumni from Saint Joseph's School that's in this room right now. I graduate, I didn't graduate up there. When I went to, I'm gonna tell my age, but McKinley School over here had grades K through four, and Saint Joseph's had grades five through eight. I fell into that category from there. It's a cathedral. And so, is that me? And so, yeah, I, I, as a neighbor across the street, I welcome them. I'll give them a shot. Best thing I've heard from the building. I've, I've been, as a concerned, I'm gonna be there. I've been here over forty years. I'm gonna be there. I'm not moving. I'm gonna move up the street to the church and alter Wait Park to the cemetery, or VA for the cemetery. But I'm not moving, and nobody's gonna make me move. And I don't think that's gonna be an issue. These folks, I welcome them. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come up and make a comment, or?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second. Motion and a second to close public hearing. All in favor, saying we're saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ball president, public hearing closed at seven oh five.
Well, I would make a motion to approve the request at, with all the conditions that John cited, especially with one, compliance with the codes, would be very important to me. I would also add, though probably not necessary, compliance with ADA, which is really important for kids that are, are in wheelchairs. Though my motion would be to recommend city council to approve the conditional use permit with the conditions stated above, one through eight plus number nine, which would be ADA compliance if appropriate.
Motion, do we have a second?
Can I ask a question without, without making a motion?
Well, usually we answer the, do the second, and then we've got discussion for ourselves.
Okay, I'll, I'll second it. Is ADA outside the purview of the planning commission? Isn't that part of what the City of Wait Park building official will determine is, is required for making the building legal?
It is generally outside what we would typically, what we would typically add in for a conditional use permit. That being said, that applies to several of the, of the conditions that are noted. When you see, like, number seven on-street parking, those are all things that apply regardless of whether it's tactically conditioned or not. Most of the ADA aspects are triggered with different kinds or levels of, of building permit activity or project. So I, I don't have any issue with, with, you know, adding an additional condition that, that, that reflects the same. It would apply regardless of its inclusion or not. But when we do these, a lot of these, a lot of times, at, at staff level, I'll just reiterate what are conditions that already apply, just for kind of laying it out as plainly and as clearly as we can. So I think it's fine to include, but generally, most of the conditions when we do conditional use permits are intended to ensure it, it works well with the, the surrounding area and the neighborhood. But there's nothing that says we can't tack in a, another condition that just drives home the point that, that they'll have to meet any applicable ADA or other, other aspects that are determined by the building official upon plan review or, or them working towards any permits.
Yeah, that's true.
Just being a recommendation to the council, adding it on and just calling it to everybody's attention, I don't think is a bad thing.
Right.
It's over our heads what goes through.
Yeah, yeah. I, that's, that's pretty common.
Point it out. We got a motion and a second with conditions one through nine. All that, let's vote on it. All in favor of it, saying, saying aye?
Aye.
What was, same sign? Pass with all present.
And I, I do not have a date as of yet when this will go to the city council. I will keep the applicants posted. Once we have that, it should be within the next several weeks. We try to have the, take what happens at this meeting reflected in the, the minutes and do any updates for the city council. But I'll, I'll keep you posted. I don't have anything additional for this evening.
Motion to close?
Motion to close, can I have a second?
Second.
Motion a second to adjourn meeting. All in favor, saying, saying aye?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, seven-ten.
Thank you, everybody.